Good afternoon, everyone. Today is Monday, August 18th, 2025, and we're here this afternoon for a work session with Community Planning Infrastructure and Resources. I'm Kristin Stevens, Chair of the Board of County Commissioners. With me is my fellow Commissioner, Commissioner Jody Shadak McNally, Commissioner Kofalos is away today. We also have our County Manager, Loretta Volker, with us, our Community Planning Infrastructure and Resources Director, Leslie Ellis, our Community Development Director, Rebecca Everett, Matt LaFerty, Principal Planner, and Aleah Rodriguez, Housing Stability Manager. I think I got everybody and their titles. So, welcome, everybody. I will turn things over to Rebecca Everett, who will be leading our first discussion item.
Great. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Rebecca Everett, Community Development Director, and I'm here today to provide an update on recent legislation that affects the Community Development Department in particular, including how we are intending to meet the deadlines for various mandates, programs that we have opted into, and potential funding options to help us achieve compliance with some of this legislation. So, our focus today is really on topics that relate to land use planning, housing, building codes, and environmental planning. And we will also be highlighting some funding sources, as I mentioned, some grants that we have either already applied for or intend to pursue in the coming months. So first, I want to highlight a recent executive order. There are actually two recent executive orders that we have been closely monitoring in community development to ensure that we are not putting the county at risk of losing out on important funding for other departments and programs. So, in May, Governor Polis issued an executive order that lists out specific recent legislations that local governments must comply with in order to be prioritized for funding for various grant sources, including grants for, from Colorado Department of Transportation, Colorado Department of Local Affairs, and Colorado Department of Energy, or the Colorado Energy Office. So, in order to remain competitive for some of those funding sources, some of which the county may intend to pursue in the future or has pursued in the past, we must meet the deadlines for compliance with various land use legislation that are captured under the heading of strategic growth. The Department of Local Affairs will be maintaining a list of local governments, and whether they're in a compliance status, an in-progress status, or a non-compliance status. State funding will be prioritized for local governments that are in the compliance status or the in-progress status, and it may be deprioritized for local governments that are not compliant. So, our goal as staff is to ensure that we are working toward that compliance status with direction from the Commissioner. So, we'll check in with you on that today, on these priorities, to confirm that these are important items to prioritize in our work plans as well. So, I will go through some recent legislation. You've got slides, but I also created a handout to try to summarize some of this information, too, which may be helpful and may trigger questions as well. So, I'll run through each of these, and I have Matt LaFerty and Aleah Rodriguez here as well, who can speak to details on some of these items if needed. So, the first one is prohibiting residential occupancy limits that limit the number of occupants in a home based on family relationship. This is something that we addressed last year. We met the deadline of July 1st, 2024, and this was an item that was included in the Governor's executive order. So, we are compliant with this item. Next is minimum parking requirements. This bill prohibited a local government from having minimum parking requirements for any new multifamily development within a radius around transit stations, high-frequency transit stations. There are only a few small portions of Larimer County where this bill applies, right at the edges of Loveland and Fort Collins, close to some of their bus stops. But because this is applicable in certain locations, we will be adopting a code change to address that. We have issued a memo stating that we are not enforcing current codes relating to minimum parking requirements. So, we are compliant, and we are working on updating the code to officially codify that we won't require minimum parking in those few small areas. And this is one included in the executive order.
Commissioner Shadak McNally.
Can you walk me through what the code update would look like? Do we have to talk through that through the Planning Commission, have us look at it, and have this discussion in case, you know, just so we understand it's not going to be just something kind of...
Yes.
...appear tomorrow morning or something?
Yes, yes. So, all land use code updates must go through both Planning Commission and Board of County Commissioners. So, you would see this. You would have the option to approve or deny or modify any code language. Matt, do you, I don't have a, stole your microphone. Do you want to comment on just the general nature of what that code change will look like?
It should be fairly simple. We'll go into our parking section of our code, which is where we find our minimum standards, and we'll just adopt some language that says what is exempted from our regulations. And so, we'll exempt House Bill 20, those areas that are defined by House Bill 241304, and we'll just write that language in there. They already give us some language that we can put in there, and so we'll just park that in there, and then we'll bring it to you. Last week at our work session, I brought up the point that we'll probably be coming forward with these amendments, but because of timing, we wanted to get them done more rapidly than not. So, we probably won't be coming to a work session, but I could certainly forward them to you guys ahead of time to make sure that you can look at that language.
I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question? Are there currently any multifamily that are there or that are being considered that you're aware of?
Yeah. Not in Larimer County at this time, Commissioner. But if you go out to East Mulberry and you go to that north side of, at Greenfield's Road, Fort Collins is currently putting in a lot of affordable housing and other housing implementation out there. So, it's that broad area. We have one transit SOP out there, and so they're picking that area. The rest of it's going to fall kind of between Loveland and Fort Collins along 287, where we have a couple of bus routes, and I think one out on East Elizabeth, or West Elizabeth. So, it's really limited to where these places are. And most of it's going to be inside of a growth management area, and probably it'll be addressed by the municipalities.
I guess I thought it related to only sort of bus rapid transit or more frequent transit, but it's all transit.
It's every transit route that has a headway of 30 minutes or less. So, any bus route that's less than 30-minute service. And so, it really does apply to those high-frequency transit routes only. And for the most part, we see very little multifamily development in the county. And typically, if we're going to see it in these locations, they would probably be eligible for annexation into Loveland or Fort Collins. So, it would be more likely that they would annex rather than going through our process. So, while this bill technically applies to us, we don't anticipate really using this code language all that frequently.
Thank you.
And the state mapped it out for us. We didn't have to map it out. So, they've already defined those areas for us.
All right. Next is accessory dwelling units. This is one that you all have seen before with multiple code changes over the last year. This bill is not directly applicable as a mandate for Larimer County. This is something that we have chosen to opt into and pursue designation as a supportive jurisdiction under House Bill 241152. And the goal of this bill was to remove barriers to the construction of accessory dwelling units. The deadline for compliance was June 30th, 2025. We believe that we are compliant with this bill as a supportive jurisdiction, but we are still awaiting that official designation from the state. And later in this presentation, I'll highlight a grant, an upcoming grant that may help, that relates to this bill and may help with accessory dwelling unit production. The next bill, SB 24174, is a more complicated one. So, this one has several different components. So, this one was titled Sustainable Affordable Housing, but has various strategic growth elements to it. So, the first requirement is for every local government, every county, to complete a housing needs assessment by December 31st, 2026. This has been funded and is in progress for Larimer County. Aleah is the project manager for that. And we have successfully collaborated with Fort Collins and Loveland to contribute funding to that as well, so that it can be a more regional-looking housing needs assessment that includes those jurisdictions. So, that's an exciting regional collaboration that's happening. And we expect to be fully compliant. That one should, that housing needs assessment should be complete by April of next year, well in advance of the deadline. Also related to housing, we will be required to complete a housing action plan by January 1st, 2028. And Aleah has a plan in place and could speak to that if needed for getting that completed, again, well in advance of that deadline, 2028. And we may have some funding or the ability to complete that in 2026.
Commissioner Shadak McNally.
Thank you. I'm Chair. Can you expand or help me remember with this, all this executive order, an action plan? What is it the state telling us? What our plan should look like? And what we should do in our actions? And what is an action plan? And is it there telling us what the action plan is for Larimer County, or is it something we can decide for ourselves?
True. Great question. Thank you. So, the action plan is decided based off of the results of our housing needs assessment, which is why we're doing that first. The state doesn't say what has to be in our action plan. We just need to have some goals and action items related to what we find in our housing needs assessment. So, we are doing our housing needs assessment, like Rebecca said, with City of Fort Collins and City of Loveland. Our action plan is not going to be all-inclusive of the cities as well. They're going to have their own action plan. And so, we will come up with our own goals that will relate to our jurisdiction and how we're addressing affordable housing.
May I continue, Chair? Thank you. So, you know, we've been pushing on Prop 123, trying to get the collaboration and have us have projects to be collaborative, and maybe I'll get a little credit for the 3%. And that was a question I had asked during the campaign. Will this, you know, are we going to be working together, and will we kind of get to share with the 3%? And with these action plans and assessment, there could be five different plans that don't really align, maybe. And I know everywhere is different, but we also have these growth management areas. So, is there an avenue or discussion as we go forward about those areas that we overlap or that we will overlap so that we aren't in conflict with actions, I guess? Is that, am I question clear?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. So, that's one of the huge wins of us contracting with Fort Collins and Loveland to do a county-wide housing needs assessment, is we are all going to be looking at the same data and the same report when coming up with our action plan. So, they should naturally all align, and not even just naturally, intentionally, right? They will all align, especially if we're able to be the first to come out with our action plan. We can be that umbrella. And then there's going to be more specific actions from our municipalities that also have to complete that.
Thank you, Aleah. That's helpful.
Two other components of SB 24174 require updates to our comprehensive Two other components of SB 24174 require updates to our comprehensive plan to add both a water supply element and a strategic growth element. And we have a lot of progress that has been made through our Water Master Plan on what we think the requirements will be for the water supply element. But the strategic growth element would likely have new requirements that we would take some analysis and effort to complete and to update our comprehensive plan. The deadline for that work is December 31st, 2026, so next year. And we have not yet identified a funding source or prioritization of that as a project within our work plan. So, that's one where we don't yet have a plan for becoming compliant, but we have identified a potential funding source that could help us with this. And these all are included in our main focus of the Governor's Executive Order. Continuing on with housing, and Aleah is certainly the expert in this one, but Proposition 123, the State Affordable Housing Fund. This is not a mandatory program, but this is a program that the county has opted into. And this program approves funding for affordable housing providers in jurisdictions that have made an affordable housing commitment and meet their commitments of delivering on an increase in affordable housing units over each reporting period. One of the requirements that directly affects community development in our department is the requirement to develop an expedited review process for affordable housing projects. So, that is another code change that we are currently working on that Matt will likely be packaging with the minimum parking requirement code change and any other code changes that relate to some of these more urgent deadlines. While our compliance deadline for Proposition 123 isn't until next year, the deadline for implementing and the deadline for developing an expedited review process, there is an incentive and a funding program in place. If we can adopt an expedited review process by the end of this year, December 31st, 2025, there is additional funding that is available. So, I'll mention that in a few slides. Going to shift gears to building codes. And some of this should look pretty, some of this will look familiar from our work session last week. Some of it is newer. So, a bill that was adopted in the legislative session this year was SB 25002, Regional Building Codes for Factory-Built Structures. This would require local governments to comply with regional building codes and design criteria for homes and structures that are not built on-site. So, built in a factory, manufactured in a factory, then delivered on-site. We are compliant with the initial benchmark, which was in May 8th of this year, to not require additional codes or have additional design criteria for factory-built structures as compared to site-built structures. So, we apply the same requirements consistently. So, we're compliant there. And then, we are waiting for rulemaking to occur on what those regional building codes and design criteria will look like, which will come next year. Those codes should be published by July 1st, 2026. And so, we intend to be compliant at the appropriate time with this as well.
Commissioner Shadak McNally.
Thank you. Sorry, I should have jinxed it with the questions, but I did review these last night when I got back from camping. But this is something that we worked really hard on as Colorado County's Commissioners acting together and CCI talking about some of the concerns. Because what, you know, snow loads or codes look like for Denver do not look the same for Summit County, especially or up in our higher elevations with snow load and wind. So, when we're looking at these codes and initially, the initial benchmark, I think we had talked about that they were taking some of those account, into account regionally. And so, is that how, with what we know about what our needs are for Laramo County, do you feel concerns about snow, snow loads, the WUI, all those things would have been met with these factory regional areas to kind? I know we talked a lot about this in these committees, but I'm, now that we're implementing it, it's always different than when the sausage is being made, if that makes sense. So, is my question?
Yes, yeah, that makes sense, thank you. Yes, some of that remains to be seen because there are no, the building codes aren't drafted yet. So, we don't know what it will look like for our region yet. They're still forming the Technical Advisory Committee. And we will plan to monitor and provide comment on those codes as they're being developed to ensure that they reflect our unique conditions in Laramo County. So, consulting our current building official, Eric Freed, he didn't have major concerns at this time with what's included in the legislation. But we'll continue to monitor that as those codes are developed to make sure that they are reflective of our unique mountain and front-range conditions. The next building code-related item is the statewide wildfire resiliency code, which sets minimum code requirements for areas of moderate to high wildfire hazard. This was something that we discussed last week with Board of County Commissioners and Planning Commission as part of the current building code updates that will be presented for consideration at Planning Commission this week and then at a Board of County Commissioners hearing shortly thereafter. So, this is in progress. And the deadline for compliance is April 1st, 2026. So, we plan to achieve compliance with this one well in advance of that deadline. Next is the statewide electric and solar ready code, which is also included in our current package of building code updates, which sets forth statewide requirements for home electrification, solar power generation, and electric vehicle charging. And this one, this bill takes effect anytime any new codes are adopted. So, as we move to the 2024 package of building codes, we are including this as well and intend to be compliant with that.
Commissioner Shadak McNally.
To go back a slide, not to take a tangent, but I was thinking about the 002 beforehand. But the statewide WUI code board met in Estes Park over the weekend. And so, I was in conversation, was going to stop by and sitting in the meeting. I was talking to folks in the room as they were talking because they're switching over some new members. We don't anticipate any more changes to that at this point from far as I know. Or is that mostly Eric Freed kind of keeping track of that like I am? I'm just curious about that.
Yeah, you know, Eric is monitoring it for now. Amy White, our co-compliance supervisor, is, has been shadowing along as well and will continue to monitor it during that transition as Eric retires, so that we're paying attention to any changes. And we've been in close contact with Carrie Dan from Loveland Fire Rescue Authority, who is on the WUI code board and is a strong partner for Laramo County. So, we have good connections there to monitor to see if any changes may affect us.
I have the same connections, been talking to Carrie and the other commissioners and one of the other folks on the board. So, just so you know, I'm getting, they're talking to me as well. But I'm just trying to keep a pulse on that. But I figured you all were, but I was wondering with Eric, you know, leaving, it's pretty technical stuff. And so, I'm just curious how we're monitoring that. Because I, I think the new members, we don't know if that's going to change the makeup or the direction or not. So, I appreciate you answering my question, thank you.
Thank you.
And one of the questions that was asked at the meeting was around costs, you know, to implement some of this versus, you know, you're building a new house and what those. So, I think Eric was going to get us those numbers. And I just wanted to put that reminder out there because I think that that's important information as we contemplate, you know, how far and wide to do this.
Yes, I will, I will make sure that's on, still on Eric's radar and that he'll plan to bring some information when that's presented at a hearing.
Commissioner Shadak McNally.
And I, thank you, ma'am chair. I had sent that Headwater Economics study to Eric and to Commissioners. I think there might be a newer one, but it shows, that's a pretty extensive study. And so, and I'm also meeting with the Insurance Commissioner already on the books tomorrow and Friday, or tomorrow, Wednesday, I think. So, just, I don't know, I think I emailed, kept him on that email, but if he didn't, I'll send it again, thank you.
Yes, no, we do have that study. So, thank you for sending that, I appreciate that. Okay. The next building code item, final building code item, is the statewide low energy and carbon code. This is not a code update that has been included in our upcoming building code changes, new building code adoption. The goal of this code is to minimize carbon dioxide emissions associated with new and renovated homes and commercial buildings. And it is applicable to the county. And this will take, this requirement will take effect anytime we have any new codes that are updated after July of 2026. So, we are not required to comply now. Whenever we next update the building code after July 2026 is when this will take effect and we'll need to factor in any code amendments or changes to address these requirements.
Can I ask you what kind of, I mean, you don't have to go into great detail, but I mean, there clearly are carbon dioxide emissions associated with building anything, honestly. And so, what are they, what are they specifically focusing on in this, in this space? Are they focusing on, you know, like the amount of cement that's poured? Or, you know, like, I mean, there's a million different spaces, places where, do you know what the focus is on?
Yeah, I would quickly get out of my depths on this one. So, I might need to follow up on that with someone who's taken a close look at that, like Eric Freed. So, I can get more information on what's included in that. But I believe it relates to more significant renewable energy and electrification and requirements to support those energy efficiency requirements, possibly building, deconstruction and waste, you know, the full waste stream. But I would have to take a closer look and follow up.
Actually, just energy efficiency for the home itself and not necessarily on sort of what kind of CO2 is produced in building a home? I don't know, I mean, like, I just didn't know what angle they were, they were trying to.
Yeah, I'll need to follow up on that and I can get you more information, yeah. All right, and the last one that we are currently monitoring that we wanted to share about today is State Bill 24005, Water Conservation and Non-Functional Turf. And the intent of this legislation was to prohibit the installation, planting, or placement of non-functional turf, grass, artificial turf, or any invasive plant species as part of new development or redevelopment projects. This bill primarily targets commercial, multifamily, and HOA-type development, not individual, single-family homes. So, it's less directly relevant to Laramo County, though we do have commercial, institutional, industrial, and some subdivision projects where this would be relevant. The deadline for compliance with this bill is January 1st, 2026. And Scott Benton, our environmental planner, is taking the lead on code updates for this item. So, we are looking at what other communities are doing. There's a lot of Colorado communities have already adopted codes that meet this legislation, would like to build on work that others have done rather than reinventing the wheel, while also making sure that it's customized to Laramo County's context in a more rural context in a lot of cases. So, we are working on code updates there to comply and hope to have those before you by the end of the year as well. Before I shift to funding sources, are there any questions on any of that legislation?
Asked our questions all along, thank you Rebecca.
Great. Okay, so we have identified a few funding sources in that handout. It's on the reversed side, reversed side of the page. Some funding sources that can help us achieve not only compliance with some of these legislative mandates, but also opportunities to achieve some other county goals as well. So, the first one I mentioned briefly earlier, the Proposition 123 Incentive Funding. So, the state and the Proposition 123 program, in an attempt to try to accelerate implementation and support some of the tools that will help communities meet their affordable housing commitments, has created this incentive funding pool, which guarantees $50,000 in funding for any local governments that adopt an expedited process for affordable housing projects or a fast-track process by December 31st of this year, 2025. That's really nice because there is no local match requirement. And while there are guidelines and requirements for how that funding can and can't be spent, it is a fairly broad list of potential activities, ranging from process improvements to customer service enhancements, funding for technical software systems, things like that. There's, there's a lot that we could potentially spend that money on that already aligns with projects we're working on or goals that we have as a county or as a department. We, we are working on an expedited process or code language that guarantees that affordable housing projects can be reviewed within the 90-day timeframe that Proposition 123 would require. And we, in addition to code changes, intend to provide a resolution as well for the Board of County Commissioners to consider that would state the Board's support for affordable housing within the Laramo County community, which would help to strengthen this commitment. So, that is a funding source we do intend to pursue and meet the deadline of December 31st this year.
Commissioner Shadak McNally.
Thank you, ma'am chair. So, what you're saying is there's, these are some process improvements we were already working on and trying to help with, you know, staff, helping with staff having some efficiencies and things. So, it's not anything extraordinary or changing some, a policy kind of direction or anything. It's just really things that you have all been trying to accomplish anyway, just for ease of staff and just to help with our, with helping our residents or our customers to have things that we already wanted to get improved anyway, is that right?
Yes, there's enough flexibility in the, in the requirements or potential funding categories or expense categories with that $50,000 to support work that's either happening in community development or in the housing program. So, whether it's work that's happening in Aleah's group or in planning or building, there are several different potential uses for that funding. And so, if we're able to, you know, achieve, meet that deadline of December 31st and we receive that funding, we could come back to the Commissioners to help us prioritize the best way to spend that money.
Thank you.
Next is the accessory dwelling unit grant program. This grant program is open now and has a deadline of later this month, August 29th. So, this is a grant application that we are actively working on right now. But we wanted to bring it to your attention and, you know, and confirm that we have, have support from the Board before we decide whether to submit that application. So, this grant program provides funding to promote the construction of accessory dwelling units. We also call them accessory living areas in the county. So, the language can get a little confused at times. We would intend to seek these funds to waive building permit fees for new accessory dwelling units as a way to reduce the cost of construction for those who want to build an accessory dwelling unit and who are willing to put an affordable housing deed restriction on that unit. So, the idea would be if a homeowner wants to put an accessory dwelling unit on their property, whether that's a basement finish or attached to their house or a detached building, that we would use this grant funding to essentially backfill any fees, building permit fees that they would have paid to us, waiving those fees in exchange for a certain period of time that they deed restrict and commit to renting that unit at an affordable rate that would be affordable to our workforce in Laramo County. There could be a really strong partnership with some of Aleah's programming related to landlord education and, and helping us meet our Proposition 123 commitments by guaranteeing some affordable housing in the form of these ADUs. So, we see a lot of potential overlap with the Proposition 123 goals and other, other programs that the county has invested in. There is a match requirement for this grant of 25%. And we are looking at ways to best utilize county resources and proposing a match of, a mix of cash and in-kind staff time to support that grant and looking at what we may have. time to support that grant and looking at what we may have available realistically in our current budget for this year, or there will be a service proposal for our budget for 2026 that may relate to local match funds as well. So again, the deadline for this grant is August 29th. This is the first round that the grant is available. If there are concerns about this grant program, we can always wait for an additional round, but we do think there's a high likelihood that we would get some funding from this round if we were to apply.
Commissioner Shadak McNally.
Thanks again, Madam Chair. So the deed restriction, I have two questions. How, what's the minimum? Is it five years, 10 years, or what's the deed?
There's no minimum requirement when it comes to counting the unit towards our Prop 123 goal. It just has to have a deed restriction on it. And so we're continuing to research and look at best practices. There's, these programs, there's similar programs to this around the state, and the state actually has a really great toolkit that they've created that has case scenarios in it, so we're still looking at what makes sense. The minimum deed restriction really is going to depend on the amount of money that the person building is able to receive and, you know, it's finding a balance. It has to make sense for both the person building the ADU, our community, and the renter. So we're still trying to navigate that and figure out what makes sense.
Because I do remember there was some older adult housing in a certain part of Loveland that was supposed to have a deed restriction, and the people that bought the house didn't understand that. And when they went to sell it, it was at a meeting where they just got really upset, but it was supposed to be always deed restricted, so that was always being affordable for older adults. And, and so I just, I'm sure this all changed now, but I just, you know, I can see someone doing this for maybe, said they would guarantee for one or two years and then, you know, get, I just want to make sure it's kind of worth, you know, the, the time of it's a five or 10-year thing. And the other question, and I know, I think I know the answer to this, but I, I still have lots of reservations about, we, we make sure these are not short-term rentals. This is for workforce housing and for folks in the community, and so that's, we have that in our code that we are definitely not allowing those.
Yes, that is, that is in our code, and that's one of the things that we are monitoring for illegal short-term rentals out there.
I'm sorry, thought I pressed the button. Yes, that is something that we actively monitor through our enforcement program for short-term rentals, and it is in our code that accessory dwelling units cannot be used as short-term rentals.
Thank you.
Well, I support seeking this grant. I think it's great, you know, if, if people can provide that. Yeah, and I, and I, I would like to kind of look at what the deed restrictions are, not to have them too onerous, just because, I mean, we're not really giving them, I mean, what would permit fees cost? I mean, how much of a deal are we giving them?
Yeah, it's, I pulled some numbers recently, and for some recent ADUs that were built in the county, depending on whether they're in an existing building or a new building, detached or internal to a house, it ranges between $3,000 and $15,000. So depending on the scope of the, the ADU, that's what we'd be looking at.
Okay, so 15 obviously is a pretty good deal. I mean, if it were, a person were saving $3,000, I don't know that they'd want to restrict it for 20 years or something like that. Because I imagine that people have, you know, may think, well, I'll build one and maybe rent it for a while, then I have aging parents or, you know, kind of, you know, a secondary goal in mind when they're building it. I, you know, I like the idea of incentivizing this for affordable housing and, you know, I think of, you know, especially in maybe a rural area where maybe you want a teacher in your, you know, near Stove Prairie or something like that. There's some, there's definitely some opportunities here. So I, I would, I, I think we should try to get that, if, if we're able to get that application in for the first round, I would definitely support that. Did you want to weigh in, Commissioner? Because, I mean, the, August 29th, it's already the 18th.
I can support that. I, I do want to make sure that it, you know, it has a deed restriction of maybe at least minimum five years, just so that, you know, people can understand it's, it's, we're not just, it's not a workaround, but we really want to try to go for the intent of this. And, and certainly, I agree even first responders or nurses, I think like this, this valley area, and teachers, nurses, those are things that are being important. So, but I just also can see this, you know, being, people find loopholes or manipulating that for things, because we know we have those out there, so. But I, since it is a time-sensitive thing, I can support it if long as it has kind of that deed restriction. And then I'm wondering, seeking funds to waive and backfill, so is it, we're waiving and then the state's backfilling or the grant? So I'm just wondering what that looks like.
Yeah, so essentially, we want to make sure that our building fund remains whole and that we, you know, we charge fees because we are using staff time and that is a, a form of our cost recovery. So the idea would be for the customer, we would waive their fee, but then we would back, use that grant funding to backfill our own, own accounts to account for our costs. So that, that's how that would work. We are planning to request $100,000, but don't, we don't know how many customers might take advantage of this. And appreciate the guidance to have a minimum of a five-year deed restriction. That does seem appropriate to set a minimum, and that may determine how many customers opt in or opt out. And so we could see what the uptake is on this type of program. Like Aaliyah said, there has been a lot of good success in some other communities, so we're trying to look at what seems to work well. You, I think it's Grand Junction has a payback requirement, so if someone exits the program and gives up their deed restriction, they have to pay back their fees within a certain amount of time. So we're looking at some of those program design elements that seem to work well in other communities, too.
Great, thank you very much. I appreciate it. I can, I can, I can support this since it's, it's probably like tomorrow, in a blink of eye. It feels like, I don't even know what happened to July, so. Thank you for your, thanks for finding about this grant.
Yeah.
I think, you know, finding that sweet spot, too, is really important. So, you know, I, I think they, when I was in LA, I think, I think LA, LA City, maybe even LA County did kind of a program like this, really because they need infill, because there's not a lot of, like, open space in LA to put anything. And so like, kind of going back to those communities who've had a program like that for several years and really seeing kind of, I think, looking sort of at, you know, how many years, you know, what, what did incentivize people to do, right? What, you know, is, is it five years? Is it three years? Is, did, would people do it if it was more? I, I don't know, but I think making sure, because I would hate to get these dollars and then never spend them down. And then what, then what, what does that look like? Do they revert to the state at some point? Do we, you know, do we just hold them, you know, in perpetuity until we get somebody to bite? So I, I mean, the idea is to create some housing, you know, kind of quickly and get it into the, you know. So I guess, you know, like, you know, whatever you find as you do that, you know, maybe stay in touch and let us know. But I think it would be, you know, why wouldn't we try to do this and, and get some of those dollars? I think it makes sense.
Thank you. So the next funding, funding program that we've identified is the Housing Planning Grant Program. So this is a grant that was created out of Senate Bill 24174, which was the Sustainable Affordable Housing Strategic Growth Bill. So the intent of this grant program is to provide funding for housing needs assessments, housing action plans, and comprehensive plan updates that address the water supply element and the strategic growth element requirements of that, that bill. So we already have funding for housing, the housing need assessment. We already have a plan for our housing action plan, but we, as I mentioned earlier, we don't yet have funding identified for an update to our comprehensive plan. It's possible that that's something that could be completed by staff, using staff time without the need for funding, but that would affect what else we could accomplish within our work plan next year, because there's a deadline of December 2026 for that comprehensive plan update. So having some funding for a consultant to assist with this would help our, our work plan be able to, and our department be able to accomplish more within our work plan next year. We're still scoping out what type of work and level of work might be required for these comprehensive plan updates, how much consulting support we may need. Part of the challenge with that is there's not, the final guidance hasn't been released yet for what these strategic growth elements are supposed to look like or what the water supply elements are supposed to look like. So we're right now waiting for that final guidance to then understand how it relates to our comprehensive plan, to understand what level of update might be needed. But we do have the option of applying for this grant program. The second round of funding just closed on it, and a third round is expected to be announced in fall of 2025, so later this year. So we hope that by the time that next round is open, we have a better sense of what might be needed to update our comprehensive plan and whether we decide to apply and for what amount. And there, that grant also has a match requirement of 25%, so we would probably, again, be looking at a mix of cash and staff time to match that grant requirement, that grant funding amount.
Commissioner Shadak McNally.
Thanks. Well, you know, always worry when it's unfunded mandates and we have, they say we have to get work to do, especially a comprehensive plan. I, you know, I tend to, before I became Commissioner, all those other comprehensive meetings, and there's a lot of work and time that takes into that, because we try to really engage the community. So I'm assuming there will be some engagement with the community on this as well, and that takes time and money, and so I'm a little concerned about that. So I'm curious, since there's still some things that have not been settled or spelled out yet, and I also, as I understand, there might have been a lawsuit against the executive orders. Is that delaying lots of things? And what is that, you know, what does that look like for everyone else?
I can't speak to the status of the lawsuits. At this point in time, we as staff are proceeding as if these deadlines are in effect and trying to get out ahead and make sure we're planning for resources and trying to do our best to meet these requirements. So we'll monitor what might be happening and if deadlines were to shift or if the legislature were to take action on this in some way in the next session, we'd certainly be monitoring that. For now, we do anticipate that we will need to do some kind of update to our comp plan next year. Leslie, did you have more to add?
Leslie Ellis, I was just going to chime in, too, that what, what you experienced and what everybody went through five, six years ago with Matt was a pretty extensive full comp plan, because we hadn't done one for 20 years. So this could be fairly large, or it could be a more targeted effort just really to address these, these items. So I think the staff is, you know, as they move forward, the staff team can really right-size this, depending on the available funding and the needs, and then make sure that the community engagement really fits that, too.
So I want to add on to that, you know, we've been kind of keeping track of some of the unfunded mandates from the state on certain areas of things that happen, budget. I would, I would recommend and like to see us add this to that list and add kind of the extra time to get the plans and get it, engagement and staff time. So I think that we need to keep track of, of all these things, especially as we're doing budget cuts and, but that we're asking to do more. I just feel like we need to keep track so we can tell our story and make sure folks understand maybe good ideas for trying to be aligned and everything, but also it comes that, you know, staff and costs and, and other things get strained and just really trying to push for, if they're going to ask us to do things properly, fund things. So if you wouldn't mind just maybe keeping track of what that looks like, I think it's important for us to be able to share with our, our friends at the state capitol. Thank you.
Yes, and this, this legislation at least had some amount of funding tied to it, which was good. We have the opportunity to pursue the grant. It's not guaranteed funding, and there is still that 25% match requirement that does make it more difficult to get that funding. So yes, we're, we are looking at these things, too, trying to figure out, okay, how do we, how do we use the resources we have as wisely as possible to achieve these goals, but also achieve other county goals at the same time. And then the last funding program that I'll highlight relates more to the environmental and water side. So the Colorado Water Conservation Board offers a grant program. We have applied for a grant already to develop a groundwater study. This is an action item coming out of the Water Master Plan to give us a baseline understanding of what groundwater conditions look like, water quality, water quantity in Laramo County to help us better craft policy around protecting our groundwater resources in the future. So as I said, we've already applied for this grant. We requested $300,000. There was a 25% match requirement on this grant, too, and we proposed even more than that, $100,000 in match, which, a significant portion of which was staff time for that in-kind contribution. We expect to hear back on this grant in late September. That, that is the final, final set of either funding programs or, or legislation and mandates. So just want to check in now and see if there are any additional questions or feedback that the board may have on any of these items, either the funding programs or some of these legislative requirements that we're working to meet. And then the third question on the list here is, does the board support prioritizing compliance with all of these legislative requirements in our future work plans, primarily the 2026 work plan?
Sure. Thanks. I'll, I'll try to get to this quickly. I might have more questions and feedback to the, I'll just say, mandates. I guess I just need to kind of digest all this, even though I read this, I had questions and then I have more questions. If you could, I just request, could we just communicate well about the changes, what you're looking at, you know, these rule makings or whatever's happening, to make sure we understand where direction it's going. I have a lot of reservations about this. You know, you've always heard me, what works for other counties does not work for Laramo, and I'm really fiercely protective of doing what's really works for our community. And then, yeah, I always want to see what we can do funding through the grant programs, these ones that you mentioned, especially the groundwater one and stuff, seems really important for us to maximize that. That might be the only way we get kind of unfunded mandates funded, so that I do support that. And then support prioritizing the compliance. Can you maybe share what falls off the list or what gets bumped or what doesn't get done? Because we have to prioritize this. And do you, have you thought about that, or is that something you're thinking about? Or what does that look like?
Yeah, that, that's a great question. I don't think I can, I'm fully prepared to answer that right now, because some of these things are still in flux. We do hope to have a lot of this work that we shared today completed this year in 2025. And so as we start to look at what that work plan looks like for 2026, I'll be able to answer that question a little bit more fully on what the trade-offs are. And it's probably going to relate mostly to that comprehensive plan update. And if we get funding or don't get funding for, for that, what, how does that relate to what's on the list? You know, we have several other projects that started this year that will continue into 2026, like the, creating the Transfer of Development Rights Program, which was also grant-funded, updating our software, permitting software for building, planning, and engineering. And so we have some big projects that will, we already know will occupy a lot of our, our workload next year, but we'll make sure we're highlighting as we bring a draft work plan to you all what effect the mandates are having on that work plan or what other items could be prioritized if not for those.
Well, just thinking about like the special review process and the special events process, since we're having already some things come up as we knew it would. And those things are, have been something we've needed to kind of accomplish and get done, because we need, I think we still need the consequences for those when they don't follow what they're, you know, the conditions, what they're supposed to. So I guess what I would say is, I, I don't know if I can answer three as affirmative or not. I, I support working with staff to find the best path forward to help with getting through this process, since it sounds like there's still some unknowns, but also trying to prioritize what we were trying to get accomplished for what you all need to see and what we hope to see. So I will support trying to work with you all, trying to figure out what's the best way going forward. I, I just don't know, I want to support you trying to go forward, but also I want to make sure we're not completely shifting all the work just to do, get this stuff done when we have other things that were a priority. We already had a list that we shorted and worked on, so I, I want to, I guess, more to come and more to see, but certainly won't say absolutely not, but I'd and more to see, but certainly won't say absolutely not, but I certainly have more questions about what this means for staff and capacity and time and things like that. So, I hope that's an okay answer, but I have more questions and concerns right now about that than not, especially with all these things with the comprehensive plans and most other stuff. I'd like to see what this all rolls out and means, so.
Yeah, that's helpful feedback and helps us ensure that we're giving the right, putting the right level of effort into some of these things in comparison to other projects.
I mean, obviously, when things are mandated and have a deadline, I mean, we don't really have a lot of choice in that. I don't want to see us, you know, become in non-compliance and then not be eligible for grant opportunities or other funding. So, yes, I support, you know, being in compliance with the deadlines and the mandates, and I think that if that means that stuff that we want to do gets pushed aside, that's kind of how it has to happen, because I don't think being out of compliance is a good space to be in. You know, do support, you know, funding through grant programs, but yeah, I think prioritizing some of these things is really important. And, you know, as we look at some of our match being staff time, right, being in-kind donation, you know, which is great, because it saves us some of the actual cash, but I mean, kind of does it, I mean, because that does push other programs to go a little lower. So, you know, there just are a lot of mandates right now in your space. It's how it's happening, and so, just appreciate the work that everybody's going to do to try to make that happen. But I certainly want to be realistic about what can get done, you know, and don't, you know, don't want to see staff sort of feeling like overloaded with stuff. So, there's, you know, if there's stuff that can wait and we can sort of prioritize those things, I think that that would be really important.
Wonderful.
I wonder if you might call out those things related to these efforts as you do your 2026 work plan? That way, it's really obvious where something has shifted because of these, and that, I think, will make the conversation go a little faster.
Yeah, it's not bad information to have, too. As Commissioner Shadak McNally said, as we make the case against some, you know, just the mandates that keep coming down, not that these aren't, I think that there's some really great programs here, and there's only so much that we can handle, you know, as a staff in a county. So, having that information is good, too. Thank you.
Thank you for all that feedback today. It's very helpful and glad to have the opportunity to share how we're wrapping our minds around all of these different requirements and programs, so thank you.
We have a few minutes left. Do we have a lot more to discuss, or?
I don't have anything that's time-sensitive, so I'll give my time to Leslie.
All right, thank you. I do have at least one time-sensitive item. First, I wanted to just update you on some construction that you and others might see happening out at the ranch. Connor has let us know that construction has started on Phase Two, and so, there are certain projects that are funded based on the sales and use tax, and those are moving forward currently. So, the removal of the old entrance and monument, that was actually completed last week. You might have seen that if you've been over there. The expansion of the detention pond to the south of the old north entrances underway, widening County Road Five as well, establishing the new parking lot E, and then adding an acceleration lane to the north on Arena Circle. And all of this work is scheduled to be completed by October 2nd. So, and it was awarded to Colson Excavating. So, just some updates in case you're out there or you get questions about it. And then, sticking with the theme of the ranch, you may have seen an article on Friday about record numbers and participation, and we had shared some information with you about that, but obviously, they're just doing fantastic work there at the fair and rodeo. And along the lines of those themes, Connor is next year planning some events to celebrate the 250th anniversary of the United States and the 150th anniversary of the state, and is seeking funding to support a variety of events that would be very welcoming and showcase our heritage and history there at the ranch. And so, he's looking for funds, and he's reached out and would like to see if we could get support from the board for grant funding from the Colorado Tourism Office. And so, I put a letter there on the dais for you to take a look at, and I think it's due tomorrow, which is why we didn't have time to put it on admin direction, and so, I wanted to get it in front of you today. And you can see the nature of the letter, but basically to focus on our heritage, Colorado heritage, at the fair and rodeo in honor of that celebration. So, happy to answer any more questions, but I know we're bumping up against our time here.
Commissioner Shadak McNally.
Madam Chair, thank you. I would certainly sign on this and support this, and appreciate Connor looking for funds, and this is really a great way for us to connect with that really historic year.
Okay, fantastic, thank you.
I feel the same.
Great, and I have the original here that I'll bring for you to sign. And then, I just wanted to briefly announce, too, we did get word on Friday, this is just a recognition, it's not money, but recognition is nice, too. Colorado American Planning Association, the Babbitt Center for Land and Water Policy, and Sonoran Institute are recognizing our Laramo County Water Master Plan for an honor award, and that recognition will actually happen in October, and so, we'd probably bring it back in front of the full board after that with the plaque and, you know, do the more ceremonial part of this, but we just wanted to let you know that we got some good news on that.
Are you guys going to the conference? Is that something we all connected to, or just because we kind of went last year? Is it up in Estes, or?
No, the conference is actually in Grand Junction, and it's a combined conference with Western Planner and Colorado APA. Rebecca, or Jenny, or somebody maybe with Danielle will go and accept the award on behalf of staff. We can get more information if that's something that the board is interested in. We sometimes will have planning commissioners attend, because there is a track as part of the conference that provides continual education and information and learning for staff who work in the planning field, and also planning commissioners and others who participate in land use matters. So, we can certainly share more information if that's something that might be of interest.
Yeah, I just really enjoyed going up for the two days when it was in Estes, and I learned a lot, and it was just really nice to be in conversations with you all. So, I just, and congratulations, well done.
Yeah.
Great. Yeah, congratulations. We'll look forward to celebrating that in the fall. Thank you.
I bet.
So, is that all you have?
Thank you.
Okay, and then, sorry Rebecca, we didn't, hopefully your stuff isn't, it's not time-sensitive, so we'll see you next time. And it is 2:32, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.